We're going to call to order the first official meeting of the Satellite Beach Youth Council, October 28th, 2019 at approximately 7:00 PM. Let's first begin by standing for a moment of silence and then the pledge to the flag. And if you'll turn and face the flag, it's just there, and we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you all may have a seat. So... These meetings are public meetings, which means you could sometimes have an audience, for people that wish to speak to you. They are filmed, so they can be seen live if people want to watch from home. So the first official thing we're gonna do is we're gonna swear you all in. So if you'll stand up and raise your right hand. And then just repeat after me. I...
I.
And then each of you say your name. Go ahead. Well, let's go one at a time.
Although we can see it.
Yeah.
Mackenzie Farson.
Dylan Geiger.
Alex LaFortune.
Sarah Zeki.
Charlotte Barnes.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
The city code.
The city code.
And city ordinances.
And city ordinances.
Of the city of Satellite Beach.
Of the city of Satellite Beach.
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of youth council member...
The duties of youth council member.
Of the city of Satellite Beach.
Of the city of Satellite Beach.
All right, you are officially sworn in. We'll get Maisy when she gets up.
All right.
Next up is Gwen Pierce. She is our city clerk. She is a former sport.
I am. I don't wanna tell you what class it is.
And she's going to do just a presentation of some of the things you need to know to be a youth council member.
Okay. Welcome to y'all. As Councilmember Ruzeki said, I am Gwen Pierce. I'm the city clerk. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit today about how to run a successful meeting and Florida sunshine law. These are important things for you to understand as advisory board members for the city. It's a little bit different than being in a club at school. So there's some certain laws and rules that we have to follow, and it's Florida statute. So, um, let's go. Okay, what's parliamentary procedure? Have any of you heard of that before? Yeah? What do you know about it?
It's sort of following by the rules of Robert's Rules of Order, or there are different constitutions of books you can follow as well.
Perfect. So, Robert's Rules of Order is generally the standard book that everybody follows. It's like this thick, so it's really involved. But you all have the Cliffs Notes, that's what they used to call it when I was a kid, version of parliamentary procedure in front of you. And, you know, don't worry about memorizing everything, but definitely read through it. Familiarize yourself with the motions, with kind of the steps on how to make a motion, because it's important down the road when you do start making motions for... Well, tonight you'll make a motion, which is who's gonna be your first chair, right? So, um, this is important stuff to understand. And don't worry not to get it perfect, because a lot of boards don't get it perfect. But they're basically practices that help with running an effective meeting. General Henry Robert, back in 1876, was going to a lot of different meetings, and they were chaotic. And there was no order, and people would be like, "Oh, I wanna talk about this, and I wanna talk about this." And so he wrote these Rules of Order to kind of bring everything together, to kind of make it orderly, make meetings orderly. And there's been 11 editions. Last one was published in 2011. They probably took all the these and those out of it from the original one. But they keep changing it, not changing it, but amending it to modernize it. So why do you use parliamentary procedure? These were kind of the principles that General Henry Robert brought forward to give every member a chance to be heard, because it's not a bunch of people talking over each other. You have to, it's gotta be an orderly way that you run your meeting. And everybody gets a chance to get heard, to establish and maintain order in a meeting. You don't wanna have a bunch of people yelling out from the audience. You know, you wanna try to maintain order, and the chair is gonna be really important in doing that, to prevent confusion when discussing business and to keep the meeting moving. Because, you know, the parliament, they would have like week-long meetings. They would just keep going and going and going. So, um, that's what Robert's Rules tries to help. Five basic principles: discuss one subject at a time. It seems like an easy thing, but, um, you know, when you start bouncing ideas around, it could get easy to get out of hand. Allow full and free discussion of each idea presented. Each member gets a chance to speak about every item if they want to. Treat all members fairly, courteously. Carry out the rule of the majority and respect the rights of the minority. So it's majority rule. You're gonna follow through with what the majority wants, but you also let the minority, who may vote against an item, be heard. And bring together the wishes of all group members to form a cooperating, united group. Okay, so a motion. Does anybody know what a motion is? Sarah, you should know. You should be watching all the council meetings. I'm kidding. I'm not putting you on the spot. Now, a motion is a formal way to bring an idea, proposal, or plan of action before the council. So you have your agenda in front of you, so you know what the subjects are that you're gonna be talking about, right? A motion is when what formalizes that plan into action. So you might discuss, like discuss going with branding or discuss a logo for the youth council. But the motion is what kind of formalizes and puts it into action. It's part of an orderly way to conduct business using parliamentary procedure, and it calls for discussion and action by the group. So once you form a motion, then that means the group can discuss it. You can have public comment, and then you can go move forward with having a vote. Steps to make and handle a motion. So this, your little red booklet is really good for this, because it outlines all the different steps for making a motion. So when you have an item that comes before the council, you have your chair just announce the item. And then you're going to maybe discuss that item or have staff talk about it. Maybe Cassie's gonna tell you a little bit about it. And then when a member is ready to make a motion, they'll say, "Mr. or Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion." And the chair says, "Okay." Member A, you may make a motion, and the motion, the member says, "I move to, um, uh, I don't know, vote for, I move to approve Logo B for our Santa Barbara, or Santa Barbara." Oh, past life.
The other SB.
My Satellite Beach, my other SB, I know. Satellite Beach Youth Council. And then member B says, "I second that motion." The chair restates the question. Okay, member A says, "Has motion, has moved to vote for this logo for the youth council?" And member B has seconded, and then let's have a discussion. And then each member of the board will be able to have a chance to speak. And then that's also when the public is allowed to speak. We'll cover this a little bit later with the Florida sunshine, but members of the public are allowed to speak on every item on your agenda. And they're also allowed to speak on items that aren't on your agenda. That's when it gets fun. So, when it comes back to discussion, the board will make their discussion, and the chair will say, "Are there any more comments, or does anybody else wanna say anything?" And then they decide to go for a vote. So all in favor, I, opposed, no, and then they, he'll announce the voter. He or she will not support. I only say "he" because our mayor right now is a man, so I'm used to him being the person to do it. But it could be a she. We won't know until the next item. So you have to kind of wrap up that motion before you can move on to something else. So once a motion has been seconded, you have to either vote on it. It can be withdrawn, it can be amended, or it can be tabled. That means it can be pushed to another meeting. So you all are discussing it, and you're just, you know, you can't agree on it. And you say, "You know what? We need more information. Can we please table this to another meeting?" So those are the actions that can be taken. But otherwise, you have to go through the whole voting process to move on to another item. It needs to be an orderly process. Okay, now we're gonna talk a little bit about sunshine. So basic requirements are: meetings must be open to the public. We're on the sunshine. Reasonable notice must be given. And there's nothing that says what's reasonable, okay? So generally, as a rule of thumb, our city, we try to keep between five and seven days before the meeting is the reasonable notice. They just don't want you posting an agenda like the day of or the day before a meeting, because they want the public to be able to have access to the agenda, to know what's coming, gonna be on it. And under the sunshine law, this is really important. No communication between board members on items under the board's purview are allowed. So what that means is you all cannot speak to each other outside of this meeting. You cannot speak to each other about items that are coming before the youth council or may come before the youth council. It's like probably completely different than what you're used to. You're used to having projects you collaborate on, you have a partner, you have a team. This is totally different. You have to stay here, when you, you can talk to each other, but it has to be in this, in a meeting. It can't be, you can't be texting each other, you can't be emailing each other. You can't see each other in the hall at school and say, "Hey, what do you think if I, you know, if I bring this to the youth council?" You can't do any of that. You can talk to each other about, you know, what happened at the last satellite football game. You can still be friends, but just don't talk about youth council business. Okay, sunshine law applies to local governments, so it applies to city council and then everybody that the city council appoints. So you're an appointed body, and so it applies to you. It applies to any subject matter that may become before the board. It includes verbal and written communication, including texts, emails, Instagram, Facebook messages, whatever new thing is gonna come out that we don't know about yet. It also includes trying to communicate through a third party or liaison. So you can't say to Cassie, "Hey, can you find out what Alex thinks about this item? And, you know, how he's gonna vote?" You can't do that. You have to, you have to make sure that you just, just try not to talk about it to Cassie. You can talk to Cassie about it, but you can't kind of use her as a go-between between the other board members. And there are penalties for violation. Now, I don't think anybody's probably gonna come after the Satellite Beach Youth Council, but there are penalties. There are civil penalties, which are fines. If the Florida Ethics Commission, if somebody says, decides to be a rat and go to Florida Ethics Commission and say, "I know that the youth council is talking about their items behind, you know, outside of the sunshine," they can investigate. And if they come back, they could fine you. And in really bad cases, like usually when it has to do with large amounts of money and developers and all sorts of crazy things, then it can become a criminal matter, where people get arrested. And that has happened, but I wouldn't, I'm not trying to scare you, but I'm trying to make you understand that this is serious. Public records. So, you know, everything basically that we generate here at the city, most of it is considered public record, which means that anybody can come in at any time and say, "I would like a copy of that agenda packet," or "I'd like a copy of this email." So even emails, that's all public record. When you're writing your notes, like right now, you're writing notes to try to remember things, that is your personal, those are your personal notes. Those are not public record. But if you write a note and you give it to Cassie and you mean for her to announce it to everybody, then it becomes a public record. So personal notes that are intended to communicate, perpetuate, or formalize knowledge are public records. So, but if it's just, you're just writing it just to remember, that's fine. That's gonna be your own personal notes. That's not public record. Emails that are related to your position. So any emails that you send or receive that have to do with the youth council or any youth council business is considered public record. Now, I think the easiest way to deal with this is anytime you get an email or you send an email, copy Cassie or forward it to Cassie. Then it becomes part of our email system. And so if there comes a time when somebody wants to do a search, like a public records request of all emails from all youth council members to the city, then we can, then we'll be able to come up with that. But it has to be on our servers, and that's when, if you send it to Cassie or me, it doesn't matter, then it will become part of the public record. So that's basically all that I have for you guys. Does anybody have any questions? Anything that you think I need to cover that's not been covered?
Would it help you guys if we get a copy of this and email it?
Sure.
Yeah, go for it.
And a lot of this information is also in the board handbook. So, you know, I emailed out to you guys when you got, when I sent your appointment notices, emails. A lot of it's in there. It will even, I think it'll tell you like what Florida statute it is and everything. So a lot of this information's in there. This is just kind of a quick version to point out the important stuff. But anytime you have, if you have a question, you can always contact me. Whoever gets elected as chair wants to contact me, and we can kind of talk through some of this stuff. Because being the chair is going to be a very important position. You are the person who controls the meeting, controls the pace of the meeting, and it's really important. One person who's really good to watch is Mayor Cutino. And I'm not trying to say that just to brown nose or anything, because I've worked with a lot of mayors in my life, and he's really good. He runs a really good meeting. So you can go on our Satellite Beach YouTube page and watch some of the old council meetings. And he's very good at keeping the meetings, you know, moving, so.
Okay, and I was gonna say, you will have adult guidance through the process as we're doing this. I think a lot of the sunshine, you are still allowed to talk to each other outside of here. Like, don't be like, "Oh, I can't talk to you anymore because we're on youth council." You just can't talk about youth council-related things outside of these meetings. So if Mr. Dominic and I, you know, see each other out and about, we don't like look away from each other. We can still chat and have a conversation, just not about something that's gonna come before city council. That's the difference. Yes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna, do you wanna talk about that part? You want me to do it? Okay, so, next up on the agenda, we're on number five. So we are going to discuss and take action on a chair and vice-chair position. I think we can start by just having an open discussion. If anybody has a burning desire to hold one of those positions, kind of tell us why you think you might be a good one to hold that position. And then after we've had a chance to discuss...
Talk about the chair. Now, the vice-chair would then be the chair if the chairman were not able to attend the meeting, just so you guys know what the vice-chair's role is.
So like, the city council, Mr. Cutino, Frank Cutino is our mayor, and then Mark Breimer is our vice-mayor. And he steps up to that position if Mayor Cutino is not available. So, we don't all know each other yet. So you're gonna have to kind of speak for yourself if you're wanting to hold one of those positions. And then after we've had a chance to discuss, this will be one of those times where one of you will make a motion to nominate, you can't nominate yourself. During the discussion, you can talk about yourself and talk yourself up. But when it's time to make a motion, one of you will need to make a motion to nominate someone else for chair first, and we'll do that vote. And then we'll do it again for vice-chair. Motion in a second, okay? So, we'll open up discussion.
So, I would like to be, serve as the chair position, because I have served on the Florida Junior Classical League State Board for the past two years. And we use Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules to operate in our meetings. And though I have not served as the chair, I have served under two presidents, and I've been able to see them execute Robert's Rules of Order. So I'm pretty familiar with it. I wouldn't call myself an expert. I think it's very difficult to be an expert on that much information. But I really enjoyed serving as a leader in that position, and I feel pretty comfortable with that information.
I also think I would be a pretty good choice for chairman. I am, I'm not, I'm probably not quite as familiar with Robert's Rules, but I have some familiarity with them. I know the basic structure of them already. I have several ideas for different directions we could take the youth council, different things we could work on. For example, some stuff with the Bivard Zoo, maybe lagoon cleanup type stuff. I know some guys over there. Another thing is that I'm willing to listen to all of your guys' ideas, different things that you have, different ideas, things you guys wanna get done. And as I get to know you guys better, learn a bit more about your strengths and different things that you guys specifically are interested in maybe setting up different like committees or stuff to deal with whatever we wanna deal with, just catering to your guys' strengths and always being open to ideas.
Anybody else? No? Nobody else? Okay, so at this time, then you have a little bit of time to think. And then if one of you is so moved, you would make a motion to nominate someone. And then there would have to be a second. And if there's not a second, then we would kind of go back to the drawing board again. Okay? And you guys have to do it, not us. Do we stand up? What's that? You can just say, "I make a motion."
All right, "I make a motion to nominate Alex LaFortune for chair."
Position of chair.
Position of chair.
And then...
I second the motion to nominate Alex's chair.
Now, it would be a time where you could have, the rest of you could have a little more discussion if you feel the need. And sometimes there's not a need for discussion. And then we would also allow public comment and a motion. If anybody from the public would like to get up and say anything. Okay, so we're just going, we're going through the steps the way we're supposed to, right?
Right, so then we'll go to a vote. Do the motion last or the second last?
You're gonna do a roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah. You do the, you do, well, it's usually the mayor's last, the chair's last, but you would do the motion, and the person who made the motion will be last.
Will be last, okay. All right.
Then the second, right.
Right, okay. So, Chase?
Are you gonna either answer yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Mackenzie?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Then you would do...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Then you would do Maisy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And Dylan? Okay. So motion passes. Okay, now, Alex, would you like to lead the conversation for choosing a vice-chair?
Yeah.
So, go for it.
All right, um, so who's interested?
I make a motion to nominate Charlotte.
I second that motion.
Okay, is there any other discussion you all would like to have?
Who seconded?
Uh, me.
Mackenzie.
I mean, yeah, Charlotte seems like a qualified candidate. If anyone else has anything they wanna say for themselves, then go ahead, but, um...
And then we would open it up, sorry, go ahead. You would open it up for public comment.
Uh, if the public would like to say anything, that'd be the time.
I third that motion.
And then Alex, you would call for a vote.
Um, yeah, let's vote on it.
Okay, so Chase?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Maisy?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I, I'm sorry, yeah.
Then Mackenzie?
Yes.
Then Sarah?
Yes.
Oh, wait, Charlotte, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Alex?
Yes.
Okay. So then you would say motion passes.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. So, at this point, I'm gonna let you kind of take over the meeting, and we will step in if needed. We're on number six. Alex?
Okay, citizen comments. See, we have a little bit of an audience tonight. If you'd like to say something?
Well, I noticed that there was...
So, yep, come up to the podium.
Yeah.
And you...
I'm gonna state your name.
You're gonna say your name.
My name's Serena Vidella. I'm an alternative member on the youth council. And I noticed that there was an absence of secretary, which records the minutes. And I have previous experience in that regard, as I was a secretary for a year on my Beta Club, to which I'm now the vice-president of. So I'm familiar with keeping, you know, record of certain ideas presented. And once I learn the jargon in the preliminary, parliamentary procedure of the packet, then I can, you know, address the certain, the language that's used more in Robert's Law, Robert's Order Procedures. Thank you.
Okay. Do you wanna jump in? Okay.
No, 'cause it's not like an official position on this board, but if you wanna help or help with...
Yes, Ms. Vidella, we would be interested in that. Yeah, that would be nice.
That way Cassie doesn't have to do that.
Yeah.
So, very good. Okay, still.
This is the part of the meeting where you never know what people are gonna say.
All right.
I'm Dominic Montanaro, and I wanna welcome all of you on behalf of our council in our city. This was a great idea that Councilwoman Ruzeki came up with. You know, the youth councils have been a part of the Florida League of Cities for a number of years. And, you know, she was in a position to kind of start this and guide it. And I wanna thank you for doing that, because I've watched these over the years and thought it'd be great to have one, but, you know, everybody has a strength and a weakness, and it was not my strength. So you had the ability and the time to do this. One of the things I wanna say and get back to, you know, the sunshine law, every elected official and every body has to abide by it, with the exception of the Florida Legislature, who enacted the sunshine law. They don't operate under sunshine, so it's okay for them to talk to each other, but you can't. One thing I will tell you, if you do get back to the email things, I use Outlook. I have a file that's city stuff. So if I'm sending emails and I forget to send it to Cassie or to Gwen, I know it's in my file. Keep track of anything that you do, because there's always somebody out there that doesn't like you. And if somebody wants to make trouble, it's very easy, especially if you're not doing something right. So watch your Ps and Qs. Make sure you're not talking about stuff that you might potentially talk about at one of these meetings. Even if it's something that you're looking at and thinking about that you might wanna bring up six months down the road, it's still a sunshine violation, so. But I'm thrilled to have you here, and I think you're gonna do a great job for our city. I think there's a lot of potential here that, you know, we started our sustainability board, and Maisy was on the first board when we did that. And, you know, when you look at some of the things that came out of, you know, the youth board and the sustainability board, they're great ideas that we implemented as a city. So, you know, they're why we are a leader in the state of Florida in things that we do. So we wanna keep moving in that direction. So thank you.
Thank you. Right. Any other comments from the public? Okay, we're gonna pause for a moment? Are we gonna go to Brittany?
Postpone, yeah, we'll go to Brittany, and then Brittany will hop over.
Okay, so this is Brittany Jumper. She is our city, how would you...
Support Services Director slash Controller slash Finance Director.
She's the money lady. She's the money lady of the city, okay? So we're jumping to number eight?
Yes.
We're gonna kind of reverse hopefully seven and eight.
It's nice to meet you all. Like Jody said, I'm Brittany Jumper. I work here for the city. I do handle all the finances here at the city. So one of the things that, as you begin to learn how the city processes work, understanding the budget and the audit and the finances of how all the city functions is important. So I'm gonna hit the highlights, but please do feel free, if there's a time that you would like to spend on something a little bit more and try to understand it better. If you guys could always ask for me to come back and I can do a bigger presentation, or if you wanna have a one-on-one, feel free to do that as well, so. So under the Support Services Department, we have Human Resources. So our Human Resource Manager handles all the hiring, the benefits of our employees. He does our Safety Committee. We actually have a city clinic, so all of our city employees who have health insurance with the city are able to go to our city clinic right here in the city. It's right by, next to the DRS Center. It helps with cost for our health insurance, so it's a great program. And then he also handles a lot of our policies, like our personnel policy, our drug-free policy, that sort of thing. And then we have our IT person, who handles all of our computers, our networking, our cybersecurity. We have obviously City Hall, we have Police Department, our Public Works Department, Recreation, Fire Department. So there's a lot of buildings that have a lot of things going on. There's a little over, right at 100 employees that we have here for the city, so you can imagine the capabilities that he has to have in order to keep everything running smoothly on a day-to-day basis. And then also in the department is an accountant, and she handles all of our accounts payable, makes sure all of our vendors get paid on a timely manner. She does our payroll to make sure the employees get paid in a timely manner. And then she handles all of our fixed assets, so to make sure that the city has all of their assets in control and we depreciate them and get rid of things and buy new things. And so she keeps control over all of that. So I'm over those three people. And then, so what I'm... So I'm over those three people, um, and then, so what I do is handle the budget, and then, um, what is typically, you've heard it as a financial audit report, which we call it, um, a CAFER, it's a comprehensive annual financial report. Um, and so that handles the whole entire fiscal year, um, and then also has ten years worth of data in the back of it. So you can kind of go back to previous years and kind of see how the city has progressed over the last ten years, which is, I think it's kind of cool to look at. Um, so our fiscal year runs from October first to September thirtieth, so we actually just wrapped up the fiscal year. So we're in the process of beginning our audit, um, because our auditors will be here before Thanksgiving, and so we try to get all that stuff out of the way before the holidays, and then it gets presented to council, um, typically in February or March. So, the budget has seven main funds, we have our general fund, um, the Community Service Fund, the CRA Fund, the Capital Assets Fund, the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, the Health Insurance Fund, and the Pension Trust Fund. There won't be a test after this, I promise. The biggest fund obviously is our general fund, it houses all of our departments, the City Clerks Department, the Support Services, General Government, Police, Fire, Public Works, Community Development, and Recreation. So typically, the budget season starts around January. As soon as audit season is over, we start into budget season. Um, I work with the departments, and then I work with our city manager Courtney Barker, trying to figure out what the best solution is for different budgets for each person, what projects we're working on, one of the big projects that we're currently started is, um, we are building a brand-new Public Works and Fire Station. So that's a big project that's happening, that's kind of gonna continue over a couple different fiscal years, so it's really important to keep track of all the financials for that. So that's one of the things that I kind of do day-to-day, is keep up with all that stuff that's going on, including when department heads call and say, hey, we have an air conditioner break. Where, where can we pull the money from the budget? That's my job, to figure out where we're going to reallocate money from the budget to make sure we can get those types of things taken care of, so. One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is, we do have a brand-new budget, this is our new fiscal year, um, it's online. You're more than welcome, we have a couple copies in our main office that you're more than welcome to look at, but you can get online and take a look at it as well. And then, the latest CAFER is from September thirtieth to two thousand and eighteen, that's as well online. Um, and you can take a look at that, like I said, it's your, it's your actual data, um, where your budget's gonna be, the stuff that you're forecasting, what it's gonna be, your CAFER's your actual data. And then it's also ten years worth of data behind it to kind of see how the city has progressed over the last ten years, so. That's kind of it in a nutshell, I know there's a lot more to it, but I don't want to keep you here forever, so, is there any questions about any of it?
So, I got some of the main funds, I'm just like trying to like note of it. I have general, community, CRA, pension, um, the police and like fire, and then recreation, and there was like one more, I believe?
Yeah, so under the general fund, you have the departments, which is the, the city clerk, the support services, the general government, the police, the fire, community development,
Good.
public works and recreation.
Okay.
Those are the departments inside of the general fund.
Gotcha.
And then the other funds are the Community Service Fund, the CRA, the Capital Assets, the Law Enforcement, the Health Insurance, and the Pension Trust.
Got it, Health Insurance, maybe this one you didn't say.
But what's really cool about the budget is it has all these tabs, so all the funds are tabbed out, so you can take a look at this, it's a lot easier to read, so. But yes, there, there are a lot of funds, 'cause just like our CRA Fund, it's a, it's a trust fund that can only be spent on certain property that's in the CRA, so that's something that has to stay separate from everything else, so it says its own little fund, and we have to keep track of what we spend and what we get, um, because we have, um, regulations with our county that we have to work through, so. Any other questions?
I was gonna just jump in, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the things we want to do for you all, and kind of each month, we're gonna have a different, um, city entity come speak to you, so one month, somebody from the Police Department will come and talk, one month, somebody from the Fire Department, somebody from Public Works, somebody from Recreation, um, somebody from Building and Zoning, Nick Sanzon with the Environmental, so that you just get a little, a little bit of how our city runs, you're not expected to know all of that that she just told you, but if it's like something that interests you, if you're a financial kind of person and you want to go dig into it further, you can, so, um, you will have a small budget, kind of, a small budget, so there will be a little discussion possibly with money. But, you know, you don't have to know, it's just an overview of how our city runs, um, so that you guys, um, have an idea, um, with those presentations, so we'll kind of have something for you each month.
Yeah, to give you kind of an idea, the overall budget, which includes all the funds, is about twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars. The general fund itself is just over thirteen million, and sixty percent of the general fund revenues comes from property tax revenue. And so that's just something key to kind of keep in mind, um, you know, you can look at a lot of different budgets around, uh, the county or outside the county. Um, we, we put pictures and graphs in the budget to help with that, because it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big chunk of the revenue that comes into the general fund. Um, and a lot of times people will, you know, question that and try to understand it, so that's a large percent of the revenues that come into the general fund, and then of course our user fees, every time you go to the recreation and use something there, or you rent one of the clubhouse's, or the pavilions, or go play tennis, all those user fees come in to help pay for the general fund, so. But, like I said, the, the budget book is probably the best reference for you, um, it will tell a whole entire story, and and if you, again, have any additional questions, I'm more than happy to answer them now, later, or in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Right. I'm sure it just depends, um, I think we're gonna, um, keep holding number seven. And if Courtney, she's in another meeting across the hall, so when she gets a chance to come over, um, Courtney Barker, our city manager, then we'll, um, we'll stop what we're doing and let her do her, um, all right, I'll let you.
Okay. So, um, we've jotted down a couple of things that we want you guys to start brainstorming. Doesn't have to be these, these are just some ideas, I know, um, after listening to some of your interviews, you guys have a lot of really good ideas, so, if you want to have some open discussion tonight about some of the things you guys want to focus on, these were some of the things that Jody and I came up with.
When we went to the Youth Council Conference, um, there are a variety of cities throughout the state of Florida that have youth councils. Um, here in Brevard County, I think Titusville has a youth council, I believe Palm Bay started one, and then we do. So not every city has a youth council, um, and when we went in August, there was a, I, you know, Jacksonville, there were some cities in South Florida, um, there were, and, and every, every group city, youth council is a little different. Um, but kind of, a few of the main things was, they kind of came up with kind of a vision and a mission statement, simply. Most everybody had one of those, um, most of them had a matching shirt, and we thought you guys might enjoy kind of talking about, um,
Designing.
designing, or, you know, bring it, work on it at home and bring it back to the next
Right.
meeting, um, some service project ideas, and we have a couple of ideas to possibly throw out to you, and I know you guys have some ideas, um, yourself. Um, and then, also, any social topics?
Like, um, a page, like a Facebook page for the board, or an Instagram page, or something, if that's something you guys want to use to communicate the stuff that you guys are doing in this group to the public.
Um, and then two, two things we wanted to, and I don't think we have to officially vote on this, but, um, we're hoping that everybody will be in agreement that these meetings, no matter what, will be done by nine PM. So you can count on that, so we're, we're not here till ten o'clock, and if you're still in the middle of discussing something, it'll have to be tabled for the next month, so that you just, and, and it might not go that late, but it would never go past nine o'clock. Um, and then, if you all want to discuss, um, dress code at the meeting, so you have an idea, um, some of the boards are very casual. Um, City Council is considered casual, our own City Council, um, Mayor Catino likes to wear just a, you know, like button-down fishing shirt and khaki pants, and, uh, often has flip-flops on his feet, but, um, just so you guys are all on the same page and you kind of know how to dress when you come, are jeans okay, or are they not okay? And I think that's something you guys can discuss as well, and kind of come to an agreement on, on your dress code. So, I don't think, you know, this can just be open discussion, um, it doesn't have to be super formal, we don't certainly need to start making any motions or anything yet, so I'll let you take the lead on that.
Okay, um, so let us, let's start with just, uh, an easy one to knock off, the dress code. Um, I am personally okay with it being at least reasonably casual, so, I think, unless anyone has any major objections to things, I think we can just probably reasonably nice, just what you would wear to school.
Yeah, like school wear.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, when you say school, or just like even a regular t-shirt, or would you stop casual to like a button-down, like just a regular?
I think, I'm not, I am personally not going to make a fuss about a regular t-shirt.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we have any major sticklers here for that kind of thing, I'm not gonna make a fuss about it. Um, I mean, buttons-down are like nice, but I think that it's okay if you're just in like a t-shirt.
I would say, once you decide on your youth council shirt,
Yeah.
um, if you were going to wear a t-shirt, maybe that would be the one.
That was where I was going with it, yeah. Um, yes, the shirt will be, obviously, I think we can always make an exception for that, but I think a t-shirt and jeans is probably like minimum casual, and you can, like, you can dress nicer than that if you want, like, I kind of went all out today, but, um, I think a t-shirt and jeans is like, just nice and casual, should be fine. Um, all right, the nine o'clock ending a meeting time, um, I am, I'm okay with that, are you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, bigger things, uh, social media, outreach-ing kind of stuff, how do you feel about that?
I feel like Instagram would be better than Facebook, because not a lot of youth use Facebook, like, I personally don't use Facebook at all.
I agree with that.
The old people said Facebook, and we knew, we knew Instagram. Um, would you use it to just share things you're doing, share pictures of things that are going on, and, um, you have to make sure that you're not, um, putting anything on Instagram that would later become something you'd vote on, so, it would be a way to promote what you're doing, share what you're doing, even after the fact, you know, with pictures or that kind of thing.
Events and stuff that's coming up.
I would agree with that, yeah, um, should we have someone or multiple people who would be willing to take initiative on that front and be our social media outreach team? Um, who's interested?
I can. You were good with social media, weren't you? Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I run a lot of accounts for a school newspaper, um, Florida Junior Classical League, different accounts for that, so I'd be happy to do that, I'm good with Instagram and Twitter.
I'd be good helping with that too, that'd be fun.
Um, yeah.
I also feel that a Facebook account would actually be beneficial as well, because I know that the whole point is to get it out to use, and that's why Instagram would be one of the main focuses, but if you can get it out to the adults as well, to the parents of the kids, that they can share it with their kids as well, and say, here's something interesting, maybe you can go on these meetings and listen in, 'cause these are some kids that are doing something.
I agree with that, 'cause I heard about the youth council, 'cause my dad shared a Facebook post with me, so getting it out to parents, I think, is important too.
I agree with that.
So if you start on, if you start on Instagram, and you have that little thing checked, right, it can automatically go straight to Facebook also at the same time, right?
Yeah, there's a way to take Instagram and get a, uh, official profile that can connect to Facebook, so if we want to go fancy, we can go fancy.
I also have a Facebook, so I can run that too.
Okay.
I know most young people don't have Facebook.
Um, anyone who's interested on being on our, uh, official social media team? Um, Charlotte?
I can be helpful.
Maisie, all right.
Okay, Alex, we're gonna stop you for one second.
All right.
We're gonna jump back to.
This is our city manager, Courtney Barker.
Hi. Okay.
Go backwards, so.
So, you guys, you were in a pretty good meeting, given the mayor, uh, run for his money. So, um, thank you all for being here, um, we are here to help you in any way we can, so, like even with the social media you were just talking about, we have a program in the city that we would have to put it on our public record program, so everything that we do in our world is public record. So, um, we have a pro- a, a, um, computer program or software program that basically takes a picture of every single change on our Facebook page, so that, and it's searchable, so that when somebody does a public records request and includes social media, we can cer- we can satisfy that public records request. And what it also does, um, is when you post on Facebook, it will also post on Instagram and Twitter as well. So it'll show you what there, you know, it'll come up with an abbreviated version of it. We don't have Twitter and Instagram yet, because we're not, like, you know, 'cause we're old, so, um, if you want to help us with that, on the city level, that'd be great, but I, I, um, it was funny, 'cause I was just getting a dose of reality from one of my millennials, uh, who's working for me and telling me how nobody reads Facebook anymore, except for the adults, and that we need to get an Instagram page, and I remember thinking to myself, twenty years ago, I was telling my boss how younger people were acting. So, yeah, it made me feel old. Um, but anyway, if you're, if there's anything that we can help you with, we, um, can provide a small budget to you to get you started on any projects. Um, we can also, you know, help you get the word out, if any of your projects will be here at your meetings. Um, and then also, if there's other members that have, want to be, um, a staff to me, um, we can do that as well, so I can, uh, when we run a council meeting, um, if you see the agendas, we write reports to council, so we can give, explain what's going on, and what, and we're asking them to do a vote on and approve this and approve that. And so, so there's that behind-the-scenes kind of activity, and we go from, uh, we would live and breathe for making agendas, so Jody doesn't know this, but that's all we think about, is the next agenda, we get done with one and we start on the next one. And so when we, um, you know, so if there's anybody interested in learning that process, um, you know, we'll be glad to, to to show them that, and they can start writing your agendas, and putting cost estimates for it together for you, and things like that, and, um, you know, help you come up with the projects, and do the research behind it, you know, that, that type of activity, so. If there's any questions, just let us know, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Back to you.
So returning to our brainstorming session, um, the last thing that was brought up was, um, uh, something along lines of our mission statement and different, I think this is the big thing for us to tackle, is what exactly is the youth council going to be focused on, what's our priority gonna be, what's our mission statement, all that. I don't know that we necessarily need to decide on this tonight, if any of you guys think of something, then going forward, then we can, like, maybe, maybe just start the process of talking about big, um, big, big-scale goals tonight, and then come back together next meeting if anyone has any ideas. But we should start talking about it, so, what are problems in our community we want to tackle? You guys, if you guys also have anything, this would, you guys should say something, but, um, what's, what's our goal?
We need more youth involvement in our city, like, we don't have a lot.
You're right about that. Um, yeah, I think that
Big one.
Youth involvement. I support that.
I'm gonna just jump in for just a second, um, we, when we went to the Youth Council Conference, and each one is different, like I said, but, uh, e- one city even just had their, their vision was something simple, like empowered, caring youth, dedicated to making community service a lifelong commitment, or something like, like a one-sentence kind of thing. And then their mission statement kind of had some like four or five bulleted points of, you know, four or five specific things that to provide a direct communication between the city and our youth, or, you know, and there could be a few bulleted things for the mission. So the vision could be just like a one-sentence kind of thing, um, and then the mission could be, you know, that's easier to think in your head.
I like that. Um, here's what we can do, maybe we start thinking about our vision tonight, like just our big priority, and then we work on the minutia of like, um, mission statement and like, actual projects we're trying to tackle immediately, and come back together next meeting and discuss that. Um, but yeah, so youth involvement, I actually really like that, that's something that, yes, we don't have very much of. There are ten people in this room that are youths at the, um, Youth Council meeting, so, it'd be nice if we could get a little more involvement than that, and seven of them are actually on the council, so, um, yeah. Uh, youth involvement is important, um, any other big pressing issues for Satellite Beach?
I think we should address some environmental issues, maybe with Indian River, looking like you said.
Yeah. Think that if we were to organize some kind of lagoon cleanups, like putting oyster mats in or planting mangroves at some park, um, that we could also outreach at different high schools, um, I know most of us go to Satellite, but if you wanted to get something going at Coco um, that we could also outreach at different high schools. Um, I know most of us go to Satellite, but if you wanted to get something going at Cocoa Beach and Holy Trinity, then that would also be, um, three times the people we could easily reach, plus we start getting Instagram feed together, then that's also another way. Um, I think that would be a good way to combine both of these ideas and get the youth council going. So that can be a short term kind of goal, is just do some lagoon cleanups.
If you're writing this for years to come, and I don't know if we would change it every year or not, or, you know, you guys are the first ones starting this, so we're, we're learning as we go, but, um, you know, ten years down the road, we hope maybe the lagoon wouldn't be something that they have to be worried about. So you might even say like environmental service or something, and keep it, keep it general.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
If you're putting it into like a mission statement, and keep it broad, and then the focus this year can be on the lagoon. The focus next year could be the beach or, you know, sea turtles or whatever.
I think right now we're just brainstorming, but yeah, that's, that's a good way to think about it.
Yeah, I also feel like awareness for the lagoon, because a lot of people like just have no idea like the situation about it.
That's true. I'd agree with that. Um, yes, Ms. Vdella?
I just thought, when you were saying that, about an analogy that we could use to spark interest in the community. So we could put up posters perhaps, and we could say, you wouldn't like, you know how you have pool cleaning services, you know, you wouldn't pollute your pool. So why would you hurt the envi- like, something that we can relate to people so that they can, they have reason to care? And so that they can related to their own lives and say, oh, maybe I shouldn't be, um, using single-use plastic ware as much? Or driving, like, wait, well, you need to drive, but, you know what I mean? Like polluting on the beach and not thinking about bringing their own napkins, and they just leave all their trash everywhere.
Okay. I think that that can be part of our social media campaign, is maybe some sort of just like, some, some posts that are just focused on calling that out. Um, you said something about like a poster or something?
Yeah, we could create sorta on our social media platform, like posters that ask questions perhaps, like are you doing enough? Are you, or we could lead it in another direction, we could show images of the lagoon itself and say like, is this where you wanna live? Or we could take the budget, which I'm not sure the amount yet, and we could try to organize a mangrove planting, um, or like a little, little planting group maybe one day on a Saturday, we could all take in, because the seeds might cost money. And then the, you know, the means to get the seeds to the lagoon would cost money and the transportation there. So we would probably need to explore more on that, as we're, I think we're all pretty interested in the lagoon as it is. But we need to take more actions and talk about real possibilities to promote change in that area. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, so about seeds, I personally am also on the Rivard Zoo Teen Program just for volunteering stuff. So I could actually probably get us access to some seeds if we wanted to do something along those lines. Um, what you said about posters, Ms. Vdella, if, if you are interested, then in roughing out a poster idea, we'd love to see it, I think. Um, I mean, if you guys also have anything you guys wanna do, then that would also be pretty cool. But, um, we're also open to community suggestions for stuff like that, so, yeah.
I actually talked about that in my application about doing a publicity campaign, and like you were saying about having, going and taking different aspects of it. Like I think what you said about asking questions, that's a way to pique people's interest, and I think we can definitely make like different types of posters and different types of posts. Maybe some more informative ones and maybe some asking questions that will pique like people's involvement. Maybe even like, once we have social media up, maybe like an Instagram story, like a trivia about the lagoon, about how much waste is in it or something like that. I definitely think there's like a variety of things we can do to raise teens' awareness about that.
How much do they really know about hookahs on?
I agree with that.
Yeah, I also feel like getting people also like involved, like getting out on the water, like so much people like spend time like on like technology now. Like I spent like my whole summer, like on my boat with my friends, because I like had got my boater's license like previously. But my dad like taught me how to drive the boat, and it was like so fun. So I feel like getting people like out on the water and like enjoying it.
Yeah.
Um, and one of the things that I've learned with my business is that more people respond to marketing via online rather than like in person. So going back to, um, Ms. Vdella's poster idea, um, I think it would be a good idea to have it up in schools. Like SGA has posters all around school, but also, once we establish our social media, doing the trivia, um, because I do feel like there is a more positive response to online marketing and, um, versus posters.
I would agree with that. I think that we should, we should try to find a balance both between how we're doing it and our content that we're actually sharing with the community. Um, so, uh, social media team, you guys, um, I think there's different, definitely a different niche for each of you guys to expand into for what we're going to be doing going forward. Um, any other ideas, guys?
Um, I also have another fairly simple one. Um, in collaboration with schools, you can kind of figure out a way to implement, you know, the refillable water bottle stations. So it's a really simple way to kind of eliminate, uh, plastic water bottle use, because they even sell plastic water bottles in the school cafeteria. So if you find a way to collaborate with the schools, um, and maybe find a way to not eat up part of our budget and have them contribute to it, because they're always looking for ways to improve their school as well. Um, and then you can kind of, um, find a way to motivate students to use those refillable water bottle stations. And that'll have a positive effect on the plastic use.
I agree with that. I think that if, I think if we got those set up, it would make that a lot easier, because a lot of times like, if I don't have access, if I have a plastic water bottle and I'm done with it, then I just like trash it, because I'm not gonna get, take it to a water fountain and refill it. So it ends up just going in the recycling, but, um, I think that's a very good idea. I think we can definitely use Satellite as a testing ground for that, uh, reach out to, um, Bobby Pruitt and start making plans for establishing that.
We have a few at Holy Trinity, and they're really good.
Does Satellite have one yet?
No, we don't.
No.
I think we could maybe.
And everybody always complains about how disgusting the water fountains are.
Yeah.
Does Cocoa Beach have one?
No.
Okay.
Uh, like with our sustainability board, that was one of the things we focused at Delora, and we wanted to carry it over at Satellite. But the thing like most people don't think about is like maintenance of it. So like if you, we had the funds to like put them in and stuff, but we didn't have the funds to maintain them, so I don't think they ended up getting put in.
Right. Um, if you all, especially your environmental, um, concerns that you're gonna wanna work on as part of your youth council, um, if you play your cards correctly and you link up with our city's beautification board, and also our city's adult sustainability board, and also our youth sustainability board, and you do some cohesive things together, you can make things kind of go a lot further than just trying to do it yourself. So, you know, a lot of the things that we do in the city, multiple boards kind of work together towards it and help each other out and, so.
Is there a contact for the beautification board, or like the head of the beautification board?
We can get that for you.
Yeah, we'd be interested in that. Um.
And then anything sustainability would be Nick Sanzon would be your go-to.
I'll send you guys all an email with all the contacts for those boards.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have Nick's also.
Um, you guys have, you've been on the board before, right, the sustainability thing?
Yeah, I'm, we're still working on it.
Okay, if you wanted to like, like if you wanted to take charge of like reaching out then, that'd be pretty.
Maybe we could do like fundraising and stuff.
I think that'd be a good idea. Alright.
Are you going to kind of think on your own about vis- vision and mission and talk more about it next time? Or is that your kind of plan?
I think that right now, we're just kinda throwing ideas out there. I don't know that we're really gonna be able to make any like big decisions on that tonight. I mean, if anyone has like a great idea, I'd love to hear it, but I think personally, I need to think about this some before I decide exactly what we wanna do going forward. So, yes, I think we'll save that for next time.
Okay, and come back with some ideas?
Yeah.
Written down on paper and?
Maybe each of us should like write a mission statement, we can like vote on them in the next meeting or something like that.
I agree with that.
We can combine and wrap them together.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but one thing we can do tonight is start thinking about a shirt design, so, uh, shirt designs.
I would like, I would be able to design the shirt, like, um, if people have ideas, like I would love to design the shirt.
Alright, yeah, take charge on that.
I think like tie dye would be fun, with like a black or white design on the back. Like it catches people's eye instead of just like a plain white shirt or something.
Alright, that's an interesting idea. Um.
If we use something involving like, we live at the beach, so like involving like a wave or like palm trees, like the actual.
Our adult one is, the newest one is, you know, the beach and the water and the sun and a palm tree. And I know you don't want yours to be exactly like ours, but. Pretty, yes, pretty much. Um, so those are the adult city ones, but.
I think involving, it's like we are Satellite Beach, it's not like we're.
I agree.
We'll learn something.
I like that idea.
I have a question about like the type of shirt, like do we want a polo or do we want like a regular tee shirt, like?
I think probably a regular tee shirt, and again, going back to the dress code thing, I think that could be just like an easy thing to wear if you don't wanna dress up. I think that that would probably be a good, just nice casual thing to wear. Um, so I think a tee shirt can be our more casual kind of option.
Yeah, and I feel like more people will wear tee shirts like around the area.
Yeah.
Instead of like going to school in like a polo or something, I feel like, um, like a tee shirt's easier.
Also, with the use of a tee shirt, if we do beach cleanups or other activities, you can wear that tee shirt to those events.
Yeah.
And it'll be much more comfortable.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It'll probably be more cost effective.
Yeah, so I think there's a consensus on a tee shirt for that.
Yeah, if, and if you do, I, I don't, a lot of you like, like the pocket with a little, a little something on the pocket and then the bigger one on the back.
That'd be cool, yeah. Alright, well, if you wanna get on that, then that would be, um, might be cool. Okay, um.
I would like, I'm gonna jump in. Um, and this is up to you, I'm just throw, I'm throwing things out to you all. Um, I think it might be a really good idea, you guys definitely have your environmental focus with the lagoon, um, for the year. Um, I think it would be important that you have some kind of social focus, whether, you know, uh, not necessarily social meaning like something fun, but something, uh, some kind of youth campaign, you know, teaching them the right ways to use social media or bullying or, you know, like a social issue um, that faces youth, not only teenage, but younger than you, because you can be, um, and then I think you should also have some kind of service plan in mind. And if there's a way to tie a couple of them together, even better. But maybe an environmental focus, a social focus, and a service focus. One of the things with, um, the League of Cities, they have a couple of contests, and one just ended, so we wouldn't be able to submit till next year. But they have a community service project contest that runs from January to March, and then they have a video competition, that's the one that just ended. Um, that runs August to October, and they just named the winners for this past year. But those are some things, um, to keep in mind, nothing that has to be decided tonight, but just kinda have those in your mind. So, uh, you know, you could, you could host forums for, for youth, you know, on social issues or something, or, uh, any, a service project. Um, and then of course your environmental focus would be, I'm just giving you some ideas.
Okay, I think those are definitely good ideas. Um, I think I would love to make our youth council, um, known to the community. And, uh, if like maybe reach out to other youth councils around Florida and see what they're up to, um, just kind of get ideas. Um, I think I'd be down for that. Um, yeah.
This is thinking a little ahead, and I don't know if anyone goes to this, but every single year the fire department does a little like Christmas night thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and usually I'm like the only person I know it in, it's like all these little kids there, and I feel like that might be a good thing to attend as a group, to like make ourselves known and like interact with children, maybe like come up with some sort of project, like arts project or something we could do with them. I feel like that would be fun.
They do little games with them every year.
Yeah, maybe create like a game thing, because they have like so many different ones.
I like that idea, that's actually a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, I've been going to that like, since I've lived here, and like now it's all like little kids, like you never see the older kids there.
Yeah.
And if you guys go, and then you tell your friends, and then they'll come, it just takes a few that, you know. Uh, I know the Satellite ten tones sing, and the Delora Vocal Ensemble will sing, so they're at least there for their performance part of it that gets some other teen youth there.
Sounds like a good idea.
Um, also, another one of my biggest points on my application was the level of youth activity in the community. So I feel like if we can brainstorm and figure out some way to increase that, uh, maybe through community events where we advertise it to the parents on Facebook and encourage them to bring out their children to participate in those activities. Um, and that's where the marketing and the social media comes in. Um, just to find some way, because the kids that aren't really active, don't really have the motivation to get out and be active. But if they can be introduced to it in a fun way, through their parents and through other kids that are doing it as well, I feel like we can really bump up that level of activity, um, and increase the health of our community.
So you're host some fun, like host some events that would?
I think that's a good idea.
And we can also focus them to be more water-related as well, because then that would also lead back to, um, what will most likely be one of, a part of our mission statement about the ecosystem and the waterways. Because if they are active in the waterways, they'll most likely become more attached to it, be more inclined to help out and figure out some ways to improve the sustainability.
Yeah, like maybe like a bonfire or something like that at the beach, or like, um, one of like, you know how like a lot of people like Fourth of July, they'll all like go on the boats, or like on an island, something like that, or like a paddleboard thing, or kayaking, or something like that.
That could be an idea, maybe we set something up at Oars and Paddles, for example, and then have, like they make that a starting point. And then, um, if we'd like, we could also run some stuff like in the river, like maybe basic stand-up paddleboarding lessons or something like that. Just getting people involved in that sort of thing and getting to know the lagoon, I think that would be a good first thing to organize for us.
Um, I have a question about that. So, um, Oars and Paddles is a Indian Harbor Beach Park, so
Well, yeah.
Would we be allowed to do something there if we get permitting for it, or?
Um, we can talk to their, um, recreation department and see if, I don't think that they'd have a problem with us using it. But we do have access to, um, the Grand Canal now from DeSoto Park, there's a.
Oh, that's true, that is, that would be a good place.
So that might be something that we can do. As we get into the colder months though, they do close it down because of the mayhem.
Oh, yeah.
So it might be something that we have to wait until warmer weather.
Yeah, okay, but I can definitely be a part of that. Alright, yeah.
And then for like the social issues, you said like anti-bullying, like we could do like nicotine or something, because like that's like a thing of.
Yeah, I think something involving.
Especially like in a high school and stuff, and like you see all the things of all the people who are like dying from like lung problems and stuff.
So it, it could be, you know, uh, something that you all present, or it could be something that you organize and get the, the people, you know, the adults or the people that you wish to come and be speakers, and you kind of host the presentation, and you, you organize it and get people lined up, um, to be your guest speakers or, and then you promote the event that way.
Also, I feel like videos are a good idea to do, because they, um, people interact with them, and they watch them, because they're drawn to it, because it's a video. So they'll be more inclined to watch it, and as they watch it, they'll start to.
I, I agree with that. I think that that's definitely a good direction to go with our social media stuff and just in general, just, okay.
One thing that could be interesting to do is, I was in the Satellite Beach Pal for a few years, and one thing they did back my, in my freshman year, so about twenty seventeen, is they did an operation now, which is, um, having to do with drunk driving and like the effects of it. And so if, that hasn't happened, we haven't done it for a few years, like the last time it happened was when I was in there two years ago. But that could be another cool like social issue type of presentation to do, because that like, we like set the whole thing up, like we had a day of it, like a bunch of people came out and like watched the presentation of it. And OP is like, he's like one of the police officers, so he had like access and like got sources for like helicopters coming in, for crashed cars, for like to, like make the whole like presentation seem real. So that could be like a cool social issue to like bring up, because of drunk driving and all that type of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, Holy Trinity, we've had like, I don't know if it's like a truck or something that the sheriff department brings, but like they have like drunk vision goggles and like they have like video games. but like they have like drunk vision goggles and like they have like video games inside where it's like you like driving, but you're like drunk and it's like practicing. Or not like practicing, but like, it's like this is what would happen.
Yeah.
Please don't.
Like this is what would happen and it was like a real eye opener and I definitely think that would, might be worthwhile if we did that.
I mean, if we can like combine with the Satellite Beach Pal for that, as another like board type situation.
So, uh, our city is very active to begin with, so a lot of things kind of already happen in our city, so you have to make sure that you're not repeating something that another group already does and you might not even know it, or um, you might want to do something similar because it's geared for adults and then you do something similar geared for youth. Um, or you team up with PAL or you team up with another board um, to host those kind of events or to plan those kind of events. Um, and make it more youth focused than say it was previously. So if you did like Operation Now, it would be great to combine with PAL and, and do that together, kinda like the Pancake Breakfast is the Lions Club and PAL, like it's a, you know, a combined thing together.
And if we did that, we can like get the word out to like a bunch of the schools in the area and like I know Satellite, when we first, when we had it, like some of the teachers gave extra credit to kids that came out and like actually watched the presentation. And OP had a bunch of his like basketball guys come out and like, it was a good amount of kids that like actually came. Which is like shocking, cause it wasn't just parents, it was like a lot of like actual youth, and so if we like had that, if we actually got to do that and then like had the word out, that could be really good.
Yeah.
Way to reject it.
I think that's a great idea. I think also if we wanted to tackle the issue of vaping, that's like a
Pretty, pretty big one, I would say.
Definitely.
Maybe, uh, if you've ever been in a boys bathroom in building eight at Satellite, at all, then yeah. Um, I think that that can also be something to work towards, probably possibly somewhat in tandem with this just substance abuse in general.
Yeah.
But um, I think that's also something we should try and tackle a bit.
Can I jump in? I keep jumping in, I know, I'm sorry, and I won't do that typically, just getting us started. In case you guys don't know and in case you're not already a part of it, Saturday is Satellite Beach Founder's Day, um, and I know it's really quick turnaround. Um, it would be neat, and I don't even know if it's possible this year, cause it's four days or five days from now to, if you could march in the parade and make a little sign and, you know, like, you know, brand new youth council, like march together or um, just be there at, after the parade and be walking around um, the sip, you know, the DRS Center where they've got the whole craft fair, table set up, I don't know if we're ready for that yet, it might be too quick um, to be talking to people, but even just to promote, you know, this new council. Um, I don't even know if any of you are available, might be something that needs to wait for next year, but.
The only thing is it's um, and Satellite's homecoming, so I think a lot of people are like, that day is like everyone kinda like is doing stuff and busy and stuff.
Right.
So maybe like next year or a similar event coming up.
Right.
There'll be other events like that, like seems like every Saturday there's something going on at the Shetter Center, so we could just.
That Ocean Reef. That Ocean Reef Beach Festival is another big one coming up, you know, at the start of December at Pelican. You know, if you have some, some solid ideas by then, maybe having a table set up, um, and just sharing some information and promoting.
When is that?
What you are doing.
When is that?
It's the first Saturday in December.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, do you know what time? Cause there's SATs on that day as well.
Yeah, that's true.
Saturday the seventh?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so.
Saturday usually runs.
Yeah, like ten to.
How many of us are actually taking the SAT that day, cause I know I am? Okay, that's like half the council, so maybe we.
But if it, but if it runs from ten to five, SATs are normally done by lunchtime.
Yeah, we could be there for a part of that.
So you can do adult, you can do two shifts, so you have the people that aren't taking the SATs do the first part of it. And then the people that finish the SATs, you might be a little bit brain dead, but you can still come by and do the second shift.
Yeah, I'm down with that.
So that way you're still getting representation consistently throughout.
So are we all down to maybe try and work something out for the Ocean Reef Festival? I think I'm, I would be definitely interested, um, I can take the second shift, cause I'm gonna finish the SAT, um.
And you will meet, you'll have a meeting one more time prior to that.
Yeah, okay, good, and yeah, that would be inconvenient if we didn't, um, okay. I mean, I think we.
I'm gonna share one more idea.
Alright.
Okay, so this was something that um, both Nick Sanzon and I were talking to each other about and he really liked the idea for maybe the beautification board or sustainability board and I had my idea for you all, so this is if it's something that interests you, I'm just throwing it out there, um, it might be one of your first initiatives you might want to try with the lagoon. Um, another city, um, it's the city of Clearwater, has launched and I can show you guys a picture, um, like a stormwater drain mural project, so I don't know if you can see like
Oh, that's pretty.
Like all of the like, the stormwater drains, they're getting people to like design and paint them.
Oh, that's so cool.
To let people know that water goes drained straight to the lagoon.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So we have a lot of those in our city, um, so one possible thought I had for you all would maybe be to have a, like adopt a drain initiative, um, and you could ask families, businesses, school clubs, churches uh, to choose maybe a drain in our city that they would adopt, um, and paint um, something lagoon related on it. Um, you know, their ideas would have to be presented to you and you'd have to approve them. Um, if you worked in, in tandem with the beautification board or the sustainability board, um, you would have that adult board as well, but maybe they would let you all take the lead on like running the program, if, if, if it even interested you, because if you're not interested, it's probably still gonna happen anyway, but it might be a neat, brand new initiative that nobody else has done before that you all could maybe take the lead on, um, and set up, you know, um, a um application, you know, or, and they would be willing to maintain the, the drain, the painting of it, touch-ups or whatever for a year or two or however you chose to go through it, so that's just an idea I wanted to throw out to you all.
I really like that idea, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be a good way to get the youth council known in the community as well as maybe a little fundraising, um, it'd be cool. So, yeah, I'm down for setting something like that up, um, reaching out to businesses or just I think probably also an open community application, cause there might be parents that wanna have their kids design something like a local drain or something like that.
The Satellite Art Department.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wanna organize something.
We can put it on the news at school.
I think that's a great idea.
Cause I'm part of the T direction, so I can just like ask and go.
Okay. Yeah, I'm down.
So, just, you know, if it's I don't know if tonight, I don't think you guys are ready to maybe make any official decisions tonight, probably not.
We're not, we're not.
Um, so all of these things to kind of think through and make notes about and what really you think could work or could not work, and then when you come back in November, you'd be ready to maybe make some motions and make some decisions and get some things planned out on dates and, and paper and things.
Just for the future, for the next meeting, I probably will be late because I have a basketball game that night, that starts at six and then ends at seven, like around seven-ish, it depends. So it just, I'll be late.
It's okay.
Yeah, so, and one of the reasons that we have alternates is that if one of you is not here and there becomes something that needs to be voted on, then the alternates take your place in voting on something, so that's, it's important that you all are here, okay? Okay.
What day will the next meeting be?
So, good question.
So it's Monday, November twenty fifth.
So it's Thanksgiving week, it's the week of Thanksgiving. And then we will not we will not have a December meeting, cause it's two days before Christmas.
Okay.
Um, we can, maybe in that email, uh, give a list of all the, a list of the meeting dates for you, so you have them.
Yeah.
It would always be the fourth Monday, um, of each month, but not December and not May. Because that is Memorial Day, so there won't be one in December and there won't be one in May.
Okay. Well, um, does anyone else have any last ideas they wanna present now? Or are we pretty much wrapped up? Okay, well, I think this has been a good meeting, I think that for next time, we should all, um, like we said, come up with some kind of mission statement and some kind of just uh, vision abstract thing, um, shirts ideas, I think that um, just taking lead on that, so if you guys have any ideas, um, suggestions. Um, and we, I know a lot was presented tonight, a lot of different ideas to work on, a lot of different projects, obviously, I don't know if we can do all of these right away, but if each of us wants to think about these ideas and come up with a couple that they're interested in, then that can be something we talk about tackling going forward. I think the Ocean Reef Festival can be a good first event for us to get our awareness and, yeah.
So if they have ideas about the shirt, um, can they come and talk to me about that or is that not allowed?
It will be voted on, is it something they have to officially vote on? Does a shirt have to go to a vote?
I wouldn't think so.
So.
Consensus, so.
Right, so if it's just something, it's consensus, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should all make some kind of group chat or something, so not for.
I was about to do afternoon meeting, get group members.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we won't like, but just for like, what do we know when meeting days are and if someone has to be late or something, is that, is that legal?
Is that legal?
I, I know, I know.
I'm gonna be sure.
Uh.
I would suggest, like if you're gonna, if you're gonna be late or something like that, just filter it to me, just tell me and then I can share it with everybody when we're at the meeting, that somebody is gonna be late.
Typically, like if um, if all of the council members are, are in an email with the city manager or with anyone, we never reply all with our answer.
Right.
So a group chat, I, I would think maybe not.
Well.
Yeah.
Um, just to stay out in the sunshine, just.
Just risky, cause you never know something might
Yeah, just read, yeah, okay.
Come up.
Get said that shouldn't be and.
That's fine.
But you know, you can individually, you know, just send that message and if you all want to get each other's phone numbers and things, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, again, shirt ideas, I think where I'm just, if anyone has ideas, suggestions and then share a couple at the next meeting, does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, I'll, if you want me to draw some things up, I can bring multiple like ideas.
Yeah, I love that.
Okay.
Are we gonna talk about social media outside of the meetings too, like what we wanna post and creating an account?
Can we talk to each other about?
Yes, outside of a meeting.
Yeah, so social media is a newer, newer issue that we're dealing with in terms of sunshine, sunshine law, so I think if you, since you were kinda gonna need that, I mean, you're welcome to go ahead and start creating those pages. And then maybe bring back, you know, what you've done to the next meeting and kind of give, you know, give a update at the next meeting and you would do the same thing for like the t-shirt. And you guys would talk about it in, in the meeting rather than doing that, so you do your legwork kind of on your own over the next month and then come back together and then we talk about it here, so you don't have to have everything done by the next meeting. Just something to bring up.
Or working ahead of, or working ahead like over the next month, like we'd like some posts on, you know, top ten things you can do to save the lagoon or, you know, questions to ask and then work through it that way, I know the whole, the sunshine.
It makes it tough.
Makes it tough.
That's why.
That's the hard part.
It's part of why government is so slow. Waiting for the next meeting to get something done, so.
And, and you can always check with Cassie and then you can always check with Gwen Pierce.
Yeah.
The city clerk, if you have even just a simple question, hey, are we, you know, would I be allowed to do this?
Right.
Just check with her first.
But that's what I do.
That's what I would do too.
Since you guys are asking me now, I'm gonna ask her tomorrow, so can we do this?
Okay.
So, alright.
And get that confirmed.
I think that, does that wrap everything up for tonight?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Can I hit the gavel to say we're adjourned?
Hey, you're gonna chin.
Let's go, alright, uh, meeting adjourned.
At eight.